Why don't we get started? I want to welcome everybody to the San Onkelmo Town Council meeting of Tuesday, September 9th, 2014. I'm Tom McInerney, I'm the mayor. It's great to have everybody here. If you could all please stand and join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did have a closed session, but no action was taken. So before I get to -- it appears that we have some water polo players here, but before we get to that, I also want to recognize a very special person at this time with a proclamation on behalf of the town, and that would be Donna Seymour, sitting right here in the front row.[71.11][71.11](APPLAUSE). A lot of you know Donna most recently. Until recently, she owned Caccina Restaurant and Wine Bar right across the street that a lot of us frequented on occasion. And on behalf of the town, I want to present Donna a proclamation which reads, "Whereas Caccina Restaurant and Wine Bar has been a San Onkelmo institution for many years, with roots beginning in San Francisco as Jackson Fillmore later moving to their first San Onkelmo Avenue location, and whereas Jackson Fillmore became Caccina Restaurant and Wine Bar and moved to its current location on San Onkelmo Avenue, delighting residents and diners from all over the Bay Area for two decades, and whereas Donna Seymour, Caccina's owner, has consistently provided her diners with excellent food, as well as a warm and inviting atmosphere, ensuring that diners return time and time again, and whereas her signature dishes include wood-fired pizzas, bombalade al sugo," I'm going to massacre the pronunciation of all these, "linguine fra di Avolo, pollo alla siciliana, orochietta de elefante,"
Irish.
"Great restaurant, great desserts, and free bruschetta before every meal, and whereas Caccina has a warm and inviting staff, many of whom have worked there for many years and are an integral part of our community, and whereas although Donna is no longer the owner of Caccina, the San Onkelmo community is fortunate to have the very talented Donna Seymour as a resident. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Town Council of the Town of San Onkelmo does hereby commend Donna Seymour for her outstanding contributions to the San Onkelmo community."[192.43][192.43](APPLAUSE).
That was very sweet. Thank you very much.
You will give you 45 minutes. How much time do you reckon?
I only need about an hour of your time. No, I've loved being a part of this community. I came here when I was pregnant with my first born, who is now a fifteen-and-a-half-year-old sophomore in high school, and you know, San Onkelmo's always meant a huge amount to me. I've always wanted to participate in the community and do as much as I could, and been very involved with the schools and just giving its -- I love living here, and that won't stop. I just need to go home and take care of the four teenagers in my house now and watch them like a hawk. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate it, all of you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.[242.12][242.12](APPLAUSE). So next, we want to recognize another very special group of young adults, and we have -- this is to recognize the great achievements by the Sleepy Hollow Aquatics 14 and Under Boys Water Polo Team.[264.33][264.33](APPLAUSE). And so what I'll do, I'd like to read the proclamation we have, and then I invite up Swanee to -- I'll give -- we have separate proclamations for each of the players, and I can give them to him, and he can introduce them for everybody, if that's cool. So, we start, "It's a proclamation of the Town of San Onkelmo honoring the Sleepy Hollow Aquatics 14 and Under Boys Water Polo Team for an incredible season. Whereas the Sleepy Hollow Aquatics 14 and Under Boys Water Polo Team won a silver medal at the National Junior Olympic Water Polo Tournament at Stanford University," Stanford.[323.33][323.33](LAUGHTER). "And whereas the National Junior Olympics features the top forty-eight teams from the country in each age group for boys and girls, and whereas the championship game was tied at the end of regulation, upon which it went to a best-of-five penalty-shot shootout, but the teams were still tied after five shots, with opponent Vanguard finally winning on their seventh shot attempt, and whereas the Vanguard team is an all-star team, featuring athletes from all over Orange County, a team that has never lost a game, winning each of their junior -- other Junior Olympic Games by eight goals or more, and whereas the Sleepy Hollow team trained five days a week, competed in Indianapolis, Irvine, and Santa Cruz as warm-up tournaments, and were determined to work hard every day to focus their efforts on the Junior Olympics, and whereas the Sleepy Hollow Aquatics 14 and Under Boys Water Polo Team will serve as a shining example of spirit, sportsmanship, determination, and grit for generations to come. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Town Council of the Town of San Onkelmo does hereby commend the 2014 Sleepy Hollow Aquatics 14 and Under Boys Team for their incredible season."[400.12][400.12](APPLAUSE).
Yeah. Yeah.
Get up here. Yeah, guys, come on up.
Come on. Is this thing on?
Go behind.
Go behind.
Congratulations.
All right, great job.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Good work.
Good job.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
Just send me circles so the picture will look really good.
This is on TV.
Everybody get ready. Make sure you can be seen.
So, I just have some quick words. I have had the pleasure of coaching most of these kids for the last four years, and I've been to almost every water polo practice that they have attended and coached nearly every game that they have played in. It is not often you get to work with kids for that long of a period and see them involved as players and as young men. The amount of hard work and focus that they have put in is hard to grasp, and to maintain that level of drive, day in and day out, is a testament to the relationships they developed with each other, pushing one another further and further towards their common goal. This summer, we collectively put all of our chips on the table and gave everything we had, and it is the dream of every coach to work with a team that inspires them on a daily basis, and that is what this team did for me. I would push them, and they would push me right back, raising the bar at every practice. The Junior Olympic Tournament, and especially the championship game, were a perfect culmination of the mental and physical preparation that all these kids put forth. For those of us that were there, it's something that we will never forget and never get tired of reliving or talking about, and it was truly an incredible experience, and I cannot be prouder of our boys for making it happen for all of us. So, thank you, guys, very much.[511.62][511.62](APPLAUSE).
You guys are all welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting. If that's it, you're welcome to go now. Thank you for coming, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, next on the agenda is open time for public expression. The public is welcome to address the council at this time on matters that are not on the agenda and that are within our jurisdiction, and just be -- please be advised that under the government code, we can't take any action on matters that are not on the agenda unless we determine that an emergency exists or that there's the need for immediate action arose following posting of the agenda. Comments should be no longer than three minutes and should be respectful to the community, and I'd ask that everyone please silence your cellphones now during the meeting. Does anybody have anything for open time? Come on up to the microphone. You've got to turn it around there, Steve, and please give us your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm here again. Steve Emery, 38, San Francisco Boulevard. I'd like to speak again about the proposed Memorial Park Detention Basin. I've written this out because English is not my primary language, it's the language of art, so I apologize for having to read this. I spend at least an hour each day on projects to keep Memorial Park from being excavated and destroyed forever. I spend another four hours a week looking for another home, so I can move away if my efforts are unsuccessful. I listen to realtors selling homes in my neighborhood denying knowledge about this detention basin, not disclosing this, to unaware buyers, breeding more disgruntled opposition. Until this dies, I feel our home has been condemned and our neighborhood being sacrificed. I have progressed from feeling ambushed to a hard-working advocate for a better vision of San Onkelmo and flood control, carrying out my civic duty. There is no valid reason to dig up Memorial Park. It will not allow peaceful sleep for residents in the floodplain, it will not reduce any flood damage, and it's an overkill way to renovate the park. Engineers came up with an overall working -- workable engineering solution, but it is not a plan. The only people considered in their project are those who live in the floodplain. Most of us don't. A proper planning process would also take those of us affected by this current project into consideration, including all of those who built the park, are memorialized there, all who use the park daily, the youngest of us who stand to lose their park for a huge part of their youth. Something I reread this week shows that engineers broke the project into two separate components for us, one with only detention basins and one with only creek capacity improvements, which is mostly concrete removal. Using, quote, "Only detention basins provides 100-year flood protection to a portion of upper Fairfax, but less protection to San Onkelmo, Ross, and Kentfield," unquote. Implementing only creek capacity increases provides 100-year flood protection to much of downtown Fairfax and San Onkelmo, and all of Sleepy Hollow, but less protection for Ross and Kentfield. Next week's Flood Zone 9 meeting will determine who pays for any work a detention basin at Memorial Park incurs, if for any reason the project is then abandoned. I am telling you, as a distance runner, and one who trained many distance runners in my ten seasons at Drake alongside the legendary Bill Taylor, that I am in this until Memorial Park is spared the fate of excavation. I am also ashamed to say that I have reached sixty years of age and have never been arrested for civil disobedience, but there's still time. Thank you for yours.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Bring it back to the council. We have council requests for future agenda items, council committee liaison reports, questions and comments to staff, and staff miscellaneous items. Anybody? Doug?
Well, I attended the California League of Cities Annual Conference last week, which was very good. It was very helpful. There were meetings on fiscal issues, which I didn't attend, but I attended ones on the California film industry. I was able to vote for Madeline Kellner to become First Vice President of the League. There were meetings on how to make your town more fun. I can't -- I think with San Bernardino made a film, that was a very interesting meeting, and overall, met a lot of people, spoke to Damon Connolly, met Jose Sisneros and spoke to him. So it was a very good conference, and I think next year, as I mentioned to Debbie, it's in San Jose, and so it'll be an opportunity for more of us to attend.
Right. Were there any materials from the meeting?
They didn't give me any materials. I think there may be some.
All online?
Yeah.
Because they actually have a lot of stuff online.
Usually all online now.
I was given a book, which I snagged a copy for the mayor, which is "If Mayors Ruled the World," which is a result of a speech given by the author.
It's "If Mayors Ruled the World," so we don't yet.
Not yet.[857.13][857.13](LAUGHTER).
And were there any things from or discussed that you think would be of particular relevance to the town, and have you kind of shared that with Debbie, do you think?
Well, there was one, and that was a really -- a reach-out. It was a meeting on reaching out to residents. It was called "The Elephant That's Not in the Room," and that is people who don't engage in town events, and I think Debbie's very good with her town newsletter, but still we all know there's people that aren't reached out to, and there was a couple of software, and actually, we asked at the very end, because they were kind of talking about one software, what are others? And I have them written down at home, and I will share them with Debbie after I've kind of looked at it myself a little bit, because I haven't really had a chance. You know, it's sort of a polling software, but it brings in demographics and helps us kind of learn who's talking to the town and who's not talking to the town, so I found that interesting.
Okay, great. And Kay, anything?
I do have a couple of things. I would like for us to look at in the future, and I understand that we will be looking in the future at a smoking ordinance for apartments and for -- I don't know if private residences can be affected or not by it, but I think we need to take a look at that. And I would like to announce that you can go home and get your recipes ready, because we are going to have an amateur apple pie baking contest and chocolate chip cookie baking contest as part of Country Fair Day this year. So we have some sterling judges. We have people who want to be judges. I mean, who wouldn't want to judge an apple pie contest, right? So, that's part of it, and I want everybody to be aware and go home and get your recipes ready. You can pick up an application either upstairs or at the recreation office, and they're to be turned in by September 25th. And I really wanted to say thank you to staff and all the people who helped with picnics on the plaza. And, I mean, there were times when there were more Indians than there were chiefs, and we were all looking for extra tables and looking for chairs, and Carla comes out, "Carla, I've got to have a red pen." Okay, she runs upstairs and gets us a red pen. Everybody was there, and everyone helped, and they were great evenings, and people were sorry that they ended. They were very successful. We signed up lots of people for Debbie's newsletter, and most of the people that I talked to, and I talked to a lot of people there, and I know you're surprised, but have only been in town a couple of years, many of them just recently moved to town, and I mean, they're munchkins this size running around everywhere. It's always surprising to me that when we're in a place like that where you can really see the turnover that the town is experiencing, so I really want to give kudos to Dave and his staff for a great time. Everybody had a wonderful time. I also want to mention that there's a friend of ours, Bill Daniels', wife Sandy passed away, breast cancer, and they're having the first annual Sandy Daniels Memorial Bocce Ball Tournament on Saturday, this Saturday, the 13th, from 10 to 4:00. And I've been given to understand that you do not know how to play bocce ball in order to play it, and maybe even be real successful. So, it's a fundraiser for -- at the bocce ball courts in Centerfell, and it's presented by the Chamber of Commerce, I'm sure Vance can speak about it, but you can go just as an observer and pay less money, but you can still eat and see everybody. So it'll be at the bocce ball courts from 10 to 4:00 in Centerfell this Saturday, and Bill Daniels is a great friend of ours, and he would love to have our support, so thank you.
Great. John?
A couple of things. So, in October, Dave and I will be meeting with the superintendent of the TAM district and the facilities director there, or the recreation director, to talk about some Drake pool issues and maybe expanding some of the community use for that wonderful facility, so I think that hopefully that'll go well, and Dave, I think we've got a date set for that. Also, related to the schools, we had another meeting of our kind of planning group for the Healthy Youth Coalition for the Ross Valley, somewhat modeled on, well, actually directly modeled on some of these other coalitions in the county that are dealing with changing community behaviors around, you know, drug and alcohol abuse. The current planning group is myself, Renee Goddard from the Fairfax Council, Liz Seebury, the principal at Drake, and David Finney, and the White Hill principal, and a guy by the name of Zach Laurie, who's with a group called Roots to Branches, which is a kind of a -- they actually run Fairfax youth programs, and he's kind of a community organizer, but very energetic. So, we're again sort of looking at how we want to set this thing up, because there's a group of people kind of energized and wanting to do work, but you need to have somewhat of an organization behind it in order to get grant money, because these other coalitions are getting grant money from through the county, but it's ultimately state or even federal money. So, you know, the Twin Cities Coalition, which you know about a bit, because the police authority is the lead agency for the Twin Cities, because that was a pre-existing group. We had some discussion about just whether the police authority could be the lead agency for this coalition out here. Technically, it probably could be, but people were a little bit concerned, because the jurisdiction is not quite exactly the same, because this is really -- this also includes Fairfax and potentially out to Lagunitas. So we're back looking now at, you know, other model, well, other lead agencies, possibly the TAM district, possibly the Ross Valley School District, or even just setting up a 501(c)(3), because you can do that, you know, to get grant money as well. So, in the meantime, there are a lot of activities going on. There are -- there were a couple of community meetings back in the spring, there's going to be another one in October, they're starting up activities for kids on Friday night. Quite a bit of this already goes on out in Quatermieter and Larkspur.
John, is it primarily focused on drugs and alcohol? Will they talk about other social issues like bullying and obesity?
No, it's really focused on drug and alcohol abuse, because it's sort of, it's somewhat grant-driven, and these grants are related to --
Corrected, sure.
But it's not just youth. I mean, it's really kind of community norms, and so, you know, things come up like social host ordinances. Another, a related topic, which was the last thing I was going to mention, speaking of local ordinances, is that there's quite a bit of activity now around prescription drug return, or, you know, when people have, they've used up their prescriptions or they have too much, and how do you safely return that back to, you know, for disposal? There was just articles in the paper this week, the Drug Enforcement Administration just changed their rules to allow pharmacies to take back controlled drugs. You used to have to do that through police, and so Central Marin has a take-back thing. In Larkspur, they're going to have it, they're going to put a bin here at some point, we have it, we'll get a date soon. Fairfax has one, so this Healthy Youth Coalition or those -- these coalitions are also interested in that, in that topic. Renee Goddard, I know, is very interested in this, and so there may well be a move, you know, locally among the cities and towns to have a local kind of model ordinance that would provide for, well, actually would mandate take-back.
Could I ask Nick a question?
Yeah.
Nick, over in the -- I've seen the one over in the police station, in the Central Marin Police Office, is there any ability to take back liquids, or is it strictly pills?
I think the things I've seen are all, it's all pill-based stuff, right? So, but anyway, more to come on this. I think it's, there's quite a bit of activity on the topic, and I would imagine the next six months or so, there'll be some action on that, so.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. One, to follow on Kay's things, I also want to thank Carla and the rest of our staff for the great -- thank you this last Sunday to our volunteer, town volunteers. It was a great event, and you did a good job organizing that great weather we had, and but no, it was a really very nice event down at Imagination Park, and, you know, a lot of our staff came there and were actually working the event, so very much appreciated. So, another thing, Debbie Stutzman, our town manager, has communicated with the council that there is some energy around, there continuing energy around developing or working on our, some of our center medians. I didn't respond to that, but I wholeheartedly support it, and hopefully we can do, get some, do what we can to facilitate and push that. So it's, we've been talking about that for a long time, I know, and it's, we've had limits and everything, but it would be great if we could get that moving.
That was mentioned, I think, as a purpose in the sales tax measures, I recall.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be in some of the literature that was put out.
Yeah, exactly. And then the final thing, Debbie, Sean Condry, our Public Works Director, Dave Donery, our Community Services Director, and I met today with, at Marin Civic Center with Raoul, I just drew a blank on his last name, Raoul Rojas, the relatively new Public Works Director for the County of Marin, along with a number of flood district staff, including Tracy Clay, Craig Tackeberry, Scott Lyle, but also with a representative from the firm of CH2M Hill, which is the agency or company that's going to be kind of leading, as I understand, at the SEQA process efforts with respect to some, at least some of the flood control, Ross Valley flood control projects. There was also a woman representing Circle Point, which is a new company or consultant that does public relations but specific to public works projects and large-scale projects. The discussion, the gist of it is, we discussed the idea, which I think will be discussed more fully at the Flood Zone 9 meeting, of not just specific to Memorial Park, but including Memorial Park, to essentially, I think, take a step back in light of, you know, questions and concerns that have been raised by the public, and in part because, you know, we've had a lot of public meetings on these projects over the last several years, but the public was less engaged then when we had it, and now they're getting more engaged or more interested, and we need to go back over and discuss and get input and discuss the needs and other things related to some of these projects, now that the public's involved and engaged. And so, the idea that we'll be discussing is, like I said, taking a step back, having another firm, the CH2M Hill, basically go back over some of the recommendations and conclusions that were made previously, such as looking, you know, identifying site locations for detention basins, determining whether, making record, take after full public input, determining whether these are the right sites, whether there are things that were overlooked, whether there are other alternatives that could be considered, essentially a more front-loaded, essentially, you know, similar to a SEQA process, I think, in terms of an alternatives analysis, and do that as part of a public process. So, members of the public who have raised concern, saying, you know, "We've overlooked certain options," or "Why aren't we doing this? Why aren't we looking at that?" We can have an independent company come in and look at, and consultants with expertise in this area, and not rerun the hydrology model, but instead look at the recommendations, and I think at that time, you know, then there'll be recommendations out of that. So I would assume that once that gets, you know, more, there's more meat or, you know, definition to what they're doing, there'll be more information shared with our council, so that our council can be directly involved and, you know, participate and come to these meetings, and, you know, it'll help, not only, I think, inform us, but also the public as well.
Tom, is it possible that that process would look at other or supplemental locations for detention basins?
Yep, yep. We even talked about, there's in the past, and this is not an unusual circumstance, as I understand it, from at least one of the -- input, determining whether these are the right sites, whether there are things that were overlooked, whether there are other alternatives that could be considered, essentially a more front-loaded, essentially, you know, similar to a sequel process, I think, in terms of an alternatives analysis, and do that as part of a public process. So members of the public who have raised concern, saying, you know, we've overlooked certain options, or why aren't we doing this, why aren't we looking at that? We can have an independent company come in and look at, and consultants with expertise in this area, and not rerun the hydrology model, but instead look at the recommendations. And I think, at that time, you know, then there'll be recommendations out of that. So I would assume that, once that gets, you know, more, there's more meat or, you know, definition to what they're doing, there'll be more information shared with our council, so that our council can be directly involved and, you know, participate and come to these meetings, and, you know, it'll help, not only, I think, inform us, but also the public as well.
Tom, is it possible that that process would look at other or supplemental locations for detention bases?
Yep, yep. We even talked about, there's in the past, and this is not an unusual circumstance, as I understand it, from at least one of the members at the meeting today, where, I forget what project they were talking about, but where people came in and said, you overlooked this pub, you know, private property, why didn't you, why didn't you acquire this public private property and do a certain project there? So this is, from their vantage point, this is kind of very, not routine, but it's
They've seen it before.
fairly common, and so that would be the plan, is to see if there are other alternatives that were not, that were overlooked, and, and make recommendations, and it could lead to, you know, some modifications or the like. So we'll just have that go out, and, you know, with the whole goal of doing this on a, not a quick basis, but not to drag things down, you know, for years and years from this, to do it now upfront, and from my view, to do it before we, that we, the town, have to spend significant amounts of money. This, this thing will pro, you know, we'll still work out the funding on this piece, because this wasn't originally contemplated, but I think it's anticipated that the bulk, if not all of it, would be paid for by the county, yeah. Okay, and I'm happy to answer any questions on this, so, okay. And Debbie, is there anything from staff's perspective?
The only thing from our perspective is the Town Hall Tower and painting project is winding down.
Oh.
And we're very pleased with the result, and I have a nice article written by Judy Coy about the history of the tower that we'll be putting out in my newsletter this week.
Great. Okay, moving on then to item one, which is the consent agenda. This is the opportunity at the top of the consent agenda for the public to comment on any items that are on it, and then the council may approve the entire consent agenda with one action, or alternatively, remove items and vote on them separately. So is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, bring it back. Anybody want to pull anything?
Pull G, please.
Okay, G, and anything else?
I had a question about D. Does that require pulling it?
Yeah, why don't we pull D? And I had a question about E, and then we had G. Anything else that, oh, then I will entertain a motion to approve ABCF.
H.
And H.
Second. Oh, second.
Move and second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, D.
I just had a question in light, Diane, of the new state legislation, which, I think, did the governor sign that?
It's on his desk. He has until September 30th, yes.
Is that, and that would go into effect, as I recall, July 1 of next year.
Correct.
Right, and is it, is it preemptive in this, I think that, from the summary I read, it sounded like pretty much exactly the same rules that we would have. I didn't, there may be slight differences, but would it, would that, does that have a preemption provision in it, so that it sort of occupies the field and local ordinances are kind of wiped out in effect?
What it does is, and for those of you that aren't familiar with it, the state just passed a bill that's on the governor's desk for signature that requires cities to require grocery stores that are over $2 million in sales a year, and drugstores that are over 10,000 square feet, effective July 1, 2015, to charge 10 cents a bag, which is what we put into our ordinance. Some other jurisdictions are charging less, but the state ordinance says you have to charge a minimum of 10 cents, so we're okay there. And then it says that effective July 1, 2016, it would include smaller grocery stores and convenience stores and smaller pharmacies. Our ordinance, the city, the town is allowed to do a more restrictive ordinance, so the state ordinance goes into effect on those dates, 2015 for the large, and 2000, July 1, 2016 for the other stores. Ours says that we're doing the grocery stores of $2 million sales and pharmacies over 10,000 square feet in size. We also included convenience stores that sell bread, milk, sodas, and snack foods. And ours, if you approve the second reading tonight, ours will go into effect on October 9. So ours is a bit more restrictive, which the state allows you to be more restrictive, you can't be less. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so in fact, it really wouldn't change what we do.
It doesn't change what you're doing, or what potentially you're doing tonight.
So it does.
Correct, and then we have to, because
Then it becomes more restrictive in 2016?
It picks up the smaller stores, and I believe that umbrella may extend, it may only include our convenience, but it may include some smaller stores that don't currently exist and send someone, but may by then.
And presumably, we would just wait for that to happen at that point.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve D.
I'll move approve, approval of D.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and E, I asked for this one. Dave, I just a question, this is on, we're approving a lease at Isabel Cook Community Center with REs for lease of space through June of 2019, and my question was, where does, how does this, that lease to 2019 potentially play into our community facilities discussion, and
Sure.
could that, is there any potential for this lease going out to 2019, potentially hamstringing what we can do with Isabel Cook?
Quite frankly, that would be a miracle, if we, if we were able to raise, you know, my anticipation is that, once we have the master plan, the cost estimates, that it's going to be, you know, a large target, and typically, we haven't seen anything move that fast, anywhere near that fast. If it, it may, but it would, it's highly unlikely, so I felt comfortable with going with the five years, not beyond five years, obviously, and we'll be able to reevaluate it at that time.
I read the lease said to have a 90-day termination
Correct.
for any reason. So I thought about the same thing, said, well, 90 days, you give 90 days notice, you get rid of them, right?
Is that right? So not within 90 days for no reason, we can terminate it, notice? If we give 90 days notice, okay.
So can they, so.
Okay. With that, I have no other questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve E.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and G, Doug, was this yours?
Yeah, I don't have a question. Do I announce why I'm stepping out? Okay, so I have stock invested in a motor car company, and so I'm recusing myself.
Oh, and the, is it a company that's buying, we're going to lease the truck from or something, or? G?
Ford.
Oh, okay.
Ford as in truck.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
I'll approve, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve G.
So move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. We can just keep Doug out there.
We'll go really fast.
Don't tell him.
He went upstairs.
That would remind you.
He's rifling through people's offices up there.
You were rifling, I was joking, you were rifling through people's desks up there. Item two, appoint members to the Park and Recreation Commission and the Tax Equity Board. Staff report?
Yes, the Park and Rec Commission has a membership of seven seats plus one youth commissioner. Currently, there's one seat available, and we have one applicant, Annabelle Reber, and she applied for the position and was interviewed on August 12. Secondarily, the Tax Equity Board has a membership of three seats, and there's one seat available and one applicant, and that is Jay Wile, who has reapplied for the position and was interviewed August 12 as well.
Okay, is there any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments of both.
I would, I would so move.
I would second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that's easy enough.
And public comment?
Oh, I forgot to ask for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
We can reverse our vote.
Should I, I'll now re-entertain a motion. Doug, same?
I would so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, so next, approve selections of youth members for boards, commissions, committees for the 2014-15 year.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. As per every year, we, the, the, the town went out for recruitment to fill six youth commissioner seats back in the spring of 2014. In the past, last year, we had a huge success of something like 12 applicants, we had a lot of applicants, were able to fill all of the six youth commissioner seats. This year, unfortunately, we only received two applications, and we have no idea why we didn't change our outreach strategy at all, there just was less interest. And if you remember, last year, we also, because of the turnout, expanded the opportunity to two youth commissioners for most of those commissions. So tonight, we're asking that you approve a youth commissioner for the Library Advisory Board, Peter Galli, Pete Galli, and for the Park and Rec Commission, Jeremy Leary.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, and we're being asked to, we have to approve, or the area appointed by the commissions? I guess we approve.
The commissions recommend them, and you guys, once it's all kind of done, normally we would do this in July, but we extended the application period, yeah.
Gotcha.
Is Pete Galli related to Kendall Galli?
Yeah, and, and her other son Spencer spent two years on the open space committee. So they've gotten, and she's our primary contact within the school, you know? So she pitches it like nobody's business, and we've had great success, and this year, for some reason, the crop of kids chose other things, obviously.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve these two.
I'd so move.
I think it's great that they want to serve. I would second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it's passed, so a lot of controversial items on tonight's agenda, so let's move on to the next item, which is, hold on, I know it's the PACE program, and it's to approve resolution to opt-in to the California First PACE Program, enabling San Anselmo property owners to access PACE financing for eligible renewable energy, energy efficiency, and water conservation improvements to real property. Is there a staff report?
Yes, as you'll recall, the, the PACE program is something that has gone through several iterations over the last five years. Basically, Sonoma started it about five years ago, and it's an opportunity for homeowners to get solar panels on their home, finance it through, in Sonoma, it's through the county, and they can repay that financing on their property tax bill. Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae had a little fit about it, because they were worried that these loans would line up in front of them, and made that, made it impossible for anybody with a Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac loan to do this, which made it very difficult for these programs to go forward. California Communities, which is a joint powers authority that's sponsored by the League of California Cities and the State Association of Counties, has stepped up to the plate and started a California First program, and that will be a way to finance renewable energy, energy efficiency, and water efficiency improvements on people's properties. The California Communities would finance these improvements by bond issuance, and it would be paid back, as I said earlier, by contractual assessments on the owner's property to repay the portion of bonds that were issued. Recently, the guidance has changed on the Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac problem, which has made this possible, and that's how the PACE Reserve Fund has been able to be expanded to include residential coverage. Essentially, the benefits for our property owners are that property owners that want to participate can, but nobody is forced to. In today's economic environment, there's apparently not that many private enterprise alternatives to finance a solar project or other energy efficiencies. One big advantage for property owners is that a private loan would be due when the property is sold, but for, when it's financed through the property tax bills, it goes with the property, so it becomes a liability of the new property owner, who has the benefit of the solar panels. The property owner can pay it off anytime without, with some prepayment penalty. And then finally, because we have a regional program that's aggregated, you can have a small investment, a small solar program, but get the investment sizing that attracts private capital providers. For the town, this is a good deal, because we don't have to repay anything, we wouldn't have any financial obligation, and the California Communities handles all the assessment administration, the bond issuance, and all the bond administration functions. And the resolution that we've proposed tonight authorizes California Communities to accept these applications for property owners within San Anselmo, and authorizes them to conduct assessment proceedings and levy assessments, and other miscellaneous actions that are required by law. It also includes Marin Clean Energy as the town's liaison to California Communities in the California First program. That's a good thing, because Marin Clean Energy assumes responsibility for all the coordination and oversight of the program. And for people who can't, for whatever reason, qualify to do these improvements and finance them on their property tax bill, Marin Clean Energy actually has an efficiency program that offers complimentary on-bill repayment of a financing program for commercial and residential properties. I brought this forward, it was discussed at a Marin Managers' meeting, and shortly thereafter, a couple cities went ahead, Larkspur was one of them, and they went ahead and did this, because they had an individual property owner that asked about it and wanted to do it. And when I got back from that meeting, I had a phone call from a man who lives in San Anselmo, who was very interested in doing it, so I, you know, brought it forward as soon as I can, when I realized we had an interested property owner.
Great, are there questions? Yeah, Kay?
I have a question. Debbie, they talk about the renewable energy and energy efficiency, but there's no discussion in here about water. What are their water efficiency programs? As a swimming pool owner, I'm wondering, you know, what they're talking about. Have you had, had any discussion of that at all?
No, but let's see, what might they be? You know, the instant hot water
Mm-hmm.
might be one.
Replacing, replacing steel pipes, or what are those, lead pipes?
I don't think that would be an efficiency measure.
Okay.
I know for us, a water efficiency measure would be, in our public restrooms, having blowers to wash your hands. So anything that saves water. Yeah, low-flow toilets is a good one, yeah. So it would be things like that. Yeah.
Irrigate, well, the usual thing that Marin Municipal Water does with irrigation
Low-flow shower heads.
And low toilets and all that. Yeah, okay.
I have a question.
Thanks.
How do, how, how would people find out about this? Does Marin, does Marin Clean Energy do a mailing to residents, or how, because it wouldn't be on the town to publicize it, right?
No, it would not, and Marin Clean Energy is really good about doing stuff like that. I'll have to pursue it. I'd certainly put something in my newsletter, and I think Marin Clean Energy has a good vehicle for getting information out.
And so if people, if people want, so it would be, they'd be the sort of point of entry for residents to find out more about how the program works.
Yes.
And they would handle the administration, and so the town is really just, there's really very little staff involvement here.
That's right, really doing this.
Other than just helping a little bit on, on, just, you put, I put something out in the newsletter, but they would presumably do some sort of outreach on their own through a mailing or something.
Yes.
Dave, will Marin Clean Energy have a booth at the fair?
I don't think they have, at this point, they haven't.
They haven't applied for a booth, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, Doug? I had a one, first, just so I'm clear, how does it, how does it work in terms of, how will a person know how much, how long the payments are spread out over? Is that all like defined based on the type of project it is, or?
It's based on your estimated savings, so, on the bill, so you can finance it over, you know, the life of the project, too. So solar panels, I think, have a life of either 10 or 15 years, it may have
Right, so if I want to get solar panels, I can, will there be some formula that's provided that tells me how long they'll spread the payments out over on my property tax bill?
I believe so, yes. I believe so, yes.
Okay.
This is, it still wouldn't be completely one-stop shop, because you still have somebody to install it, right?
That's right.
So, it's really a two-piece, two-part problem. This is just the financing.
This is how you, this is how you can pay for it.
They might have recommendations about who to use, but there's innumerable people wanting to install solar panels.
That's right.
And is there a, and just, again, I should, I probably should know this, but is there a tax advantage to a resident to do this? Do you get to deduct the, the payment?
We've, we've talked about that. We don't give tax advice, so it would not be advertised as something that's tax deductible. And in fact, on your tax bill, in reality, you're supposed to only subtract your tax. So, not really. Yeah.
Okay.
Although, there are, there are solar credits. I mean, there are credits for the cost of the work.
Right.
Right, okay.
Right. But that would be, you know, each individual person would have to talk to their tax person.
Okay. So, this, this would be advantageous to somebody that you may get, I'm just, would there be, these be better terms than what a bank can provide?
Yes, I think so, because you have a larger group. So, you know, a lot more buying power.
Okay. All right, great. Okay. Is there any public comment on this?
Yes, Mr. Donery.
I'm sorry. I wanted to say, I just looked it up, and Marin Clean Energy will be at Country Fair Day.
Okay, so, maybe...
Oh, good.
Maybe we could emphasize it then.
Yeah, well, we will let them know that if, if in fact this passes, we'll let them know that we're in, and they can advertise it.
So, they're handling Larkspur, I would imagine.
I think so, yeah.
So, they would have, they might have some materials available.
Oh, they have other cities. There's, and, and they've done it for the county. So, oh, yeah. They're, I'm sure they're ready to go.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Are opting in to this program?
I would move so.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay. And with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you for coming, everybody. I think this is my record.